Answer the pledge, please.
Mayor O'Connor?
Here.
Morissette?
Here.
Alms?
Here.
DeZio?
Here.
Weber?
Here.
Brooke?
Here.
Hall?
All right, we have a public hearing. Public hearing on ordinance 19-21 for zoning map amendment from P U B, Public to OFC Office and Comprehensive Plan Amendment from Institutional to Neighborhood Commercial at Tax Parcel 236-1974-51000, St. Croix Valley Professionals. So this is a public hearing. This is your opportunity to comment on this issue if you'd like. And if you would, please keep your comments brief and try not to repeat comments that have already been made. If you're on Zoom.
I have an idea.
Just raise your hand on Zoom and we'll get you in here. So I think that's it. Is there anyone here who'd like to make a comment? Anyone who'd like to make a comment? Aaron, anything on Zoom?
No.
Anyone like to make?
Wait one second, hold on one second. Somebody just came in, let's give them a chance.
Okay.
Somebody did just join the Zoom. If that person is here for the public hearing. I gotta open it here. Here for the public hearing on the zoning map amendment, please speak up now.
No?
I guess not, I don't want to say the name, but whoever just joined Zoom, if you're here for the public hearing on the zoning map amendment.
All right, so we're gonna be, we'll do this.
Raise your hand or do something, but I'm appearing that they're not here for that.
I'll do this one more time then, anybody here to make a comment? Anybody wishing to make a comment? Anybody wishing to make a comment?
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion second to close the public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion's approved, the public hearing is closed. Discussion possible action on ordinance 19-21 for zoning map amendment from P U B Public to OFC Office and a Comprehensive Plan Amendment from Institutional to Neighborhood Commercial at Tax Parcel 236-1974-51000, St. Croix Valley Professionals.
I move to approve ordinance 19-21. Actually, I suppose I have to suspend the rules.
Yep.
So I move to suspend the rules.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZio?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Motion's approved, rules are suspended.
Now it moves to adopt ordinance 19-21.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to adopt. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Public hearing for the Hudson 2040 Comprehensive Plan and Land Use Map. Again, this is a public hearing, your opportunity to weigh in on the issue of the comprehensive plan. Again, please keep your comments brief. Try not to repeat comments that have already been made. And if you were on Zoom, please click the button to raise your hand and we will recognize you. Is there anyone here who'd like to make a comment? Anyone that would like to make a comment? Anyone that would like to make a comment?
Move to close the hearing.
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Citizen comments. So this, once again, this is a citizen comment portion. This is your opportunity to make any comment that you'd like on an issue that you would like to talk about relative to the city. Comments can only be made by residents of the city of Hudson. Once again, please try to keep your comments brief and try not to repeat comments that have already been made. Anything I'm missing, that should do it, I think. So, again, citizen comments, this is your opportunity to make a statement on anything, any issue that is not on the agenda. If you wanted to comment on something on the agenda, we would have to pull that item from the agenda if the council wanted to do that and then hold a public hearing on it, which would give you an opportunity to talk about that agenda item. So hopefully everybody understands that. Is there anybody who'd like to make a comment? Any comments? Any comments? Any comments? All right, we'll close that portion of the agenda, consent agenda.
Approve the meeting minutes from October 4th, 2021, regular council meeting. Approve claims in the amount of $246,427.89. Approve the renewal of tax collection agreement with St. Croix County. Approve the final development plans and conditional use permit for Avalon at 340 Yorg Drive, Avalon Express Incorporated. Approve the final development plans for a building expansion at 3010 and Low Street, Winnesota Regional Transportation. Approve two blind child signs for each direction on Elizabeth Way. Approve the installation of no parking from here to corner, from, that's wrong, from corner signs on the west side of Third Street Hill from November 15th to April 1st. Approve closing Third Street from Vine to St. Croix Street and north of St. Croix Street for Halloween. And approve severe weather siren previously located at 808 Hagan Street.
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Motion and second to approve consent agenda, roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZio?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Motion's approved, consent agenda is approved. Discussion and possible action on policy requiring masks in City Hall.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we adjust the policy requiring masks to highly recommend, out of respect for our citizen employees that work in this building.
I'll second for discussion purposes.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I think I've heard enough about others that have tried to attend or come to the City Hall and the issues they've had and it just doesn't settle well with me. And I don't think we're accomplishing the ultimate goal of trying to do what Paul, you've tried to do. And I respect the fact that you do have your opinion, but I don't think this is punitive to me. And going forward, if we don't make it a highly recommended motion, I will continue to move this motion every meeting. And I can tell you, we've, I don't know how many people were outside, Jeff, but we, two, well, two people that weren't able to do, see their, the business of the city. And that goes both ways.
Yep. Well, you're certainly entitled to your thoughts and I appreciate your passion and I appreciate you willing to bring it to every meeting because I want it to be looked at every meeting and I want us to revise when the county numbers are in a place where we can do that. Believe me, I am the first person that wants to revise this policy when it's safe to do so. However, the Dashboard for St. Croix County Health Department still is rating the highest level for community infection. And so I would think it's not prudent or wise at this juncture to change the current policy, which has been designed to not only protect our employees, but protect the public as well.
And I share that same opinion, Paul. And I would like to note that hospital beds available in western Wisconsin is at the lowest it's been. And that is also in the Twin City area, 98% to 95% of the hospital beds are filled there too. So I agree, this should be on the agenda every time for us to discuss. At the moment, I don't think the number's warranted. The moment they do, I agree with Paul on that. In fact, and I know there's a motion on the table. In fact, I've actually heard from residents and committee members that they would like us to amend it so that if there were committee meetings in other city-owned buildings, that masks would be required there as well. And that's from committee members and community members. So I appreciate the discussion, but I'm unable to support the motion that you bring forward, Councilmember Morissette.
I did second it for discussion purposes and I just want to reiterate kind of where I stand before. Again, I would love if we had staff that was versed in health. I mean, I know that we are all privy to all the information that's out there. I would prefer, if we were to stick with something like this, to have a letter from the Health Department saying that this is what Hudson should do. And so that's why I'm against continuing on.
You know, and at the last meeting, Paul, and you, we had talked about, you know, following the county guidelines, right now they're not saying that we are required to wear these, that we should. It's highly recommended we should. And I would interject that that should probably be where we're at.
Yeah, and I guess I would disagree based on my conversations with the St. Croix County Health Public Officer, who's basically in charge there. And I wish we were through COVID. I said at last meeting, you know, we're in the bottom of the fifth inning. We got four innings to go. We cannot let the guard down. We need to protect the public, we need to protect our employees.
May I be simple to ask, what information is she giving you to make that decision that she's not putting?
I'm gonna refer you to something called the St. Croix County Dashboard, Randy, that was sent out three years ago. If you go to the St. Croix County Dashboard.
Let me finish, please.
Okay, sorry.
I'm asking you, what information is she giving you on the phone that you're having these conversations with, that she doesn't have on that dashboard, which is free for the rest of the St. Croix County citizens to view?
I guess what I'm saying is, there's enough, the way I read the dashboard is pretty clear, that we, anybody vaccinated or unvaccinated, the Health Department, who is the experts in our area, is saying in bold print, "We recommend you wear a mask indoors for everybody." I'm taking that recommendation, the council took that recommendation. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. We may as well be preventative. There's, it's good public health policy to be preventative in an international pandemic.
And.
Isn't that what the motion is? Recommend that people wear masks, isn't that the motion?
Yeah, but I think it was pointed out last meeting. We all know that recommendations are not working and we know that recommendations code word for, nobody has to wear a mask. That's just the way the public's treating it. It's just, it's the reality, was pointed out last meeting.
So in the last meeting, I did, I did point out that I would have loved to have seen a highly recommended because before last meeting's vote, about a month prior, we sat with that motion that got killed. And so I see it as, again, if we put a recommendation out there, if it's not being followed, then let's go to another length of that, but we never tried that. So I'm not understanding, I guess, how we got to leap, making that leap, that people weren't going to do it before we actually tried it.
Well, I've been to a lot of public places where I've seen recommendations and I can tell you that they don't work, based on my experience. They don't work. Look, go in any place that says recommendations and you won't see, I mean, you may see a few people. So I don't think the policy is harming anybody. I think the policy is preventative. I think the policy needs to be in place as long as the county ratings are saying it's high. As soon as those rates go down, like I said, I'd be the first to pull this because it's not, it's not fun to do, but sometimes the right thing is the harder thing. And sometimes the right thing is, takes more effort to do, and that's what we're doing.
You say harming, I guess I would take exception to that when our, we put our staff and our resources, our human resources in arms' way, if you will, for lack of better terms, and at the front desk. Our officers at meetings were taking resources, their human resources, and putting them in a very particular position, which we would not have to do if we highly recommended a mask. And out of respect for them, I think we should change this to highly recommend. And that's all I'll say this week.
I guess I can say we can have that conversation every meeting if you'd like, but as long as the rating is hot, red, high, whatever the words the county's using, they're using high and they're using red on their website, they are sending to the public an alarm that we have a real problem in St. Croix County. And we have a responsibility to protect our people. So we can have the conversation every time. My mind is not changing until the science of those rates goes down. That's just the reality that we're in right now. I would love it if they would, hopefully they would. I would also use this time to encourage people, if you are not vaccinated, if you're watching this at home, please, 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 go out and get vaccinated because that is the quickest way to end this pandemic.
Paul, or Councilmember DeZio, I'd like to also add, you know, we lock the doors in an effort to keep the employees safe. That was something they were concerned about, so we did respond to those concerns.
Well, this is interesting and I certainly don't, I mean, we're gonna have to have this on the agenda. Unless this passes, we're gonna have to have this on the agenda every two weeks. Let me, let me just add my two cents here. Paul, I understand what you're doing, I also respect that, but to me, this is, this is not making sense. To me, this is counterproductive as far as the work that needs to be done here at the city. You keep telling us about how the county and the Health Director at the county is suggesting to us that we mandate masks here, but they're not doing that in the building where she's office. So, I mean, this is, she represents the county, the county is not mandating masks. So I don't understand, to me, it's a stretch to say that, that the language at the county is different than what they're actually, the practice that they have in place. And that makes no sense to me, I'm confused, frankly, I'm very confused. And what I'm hearing from staff members is that, again, this is counterproductive, where we have people that are coming to our doors here at City Hall, our customers. The customers that are trying to do business here at the city can't get through the door because it's locked. And the weather's gonna turn here pretty quick and we're gonna have elderly people that are coming here not realizing that this building is locked and they're gonna be struggling through inclement weather and they're gonna find out that they can't get in the building. Now that makes absolutely no sense to me right now, especially given that they can go anywhere else in the city and get in. Even Menards, who had the strictest policy and the very first company to say, "You're not coming through our doors, no matter what, without a mask." And they're not doing that. But most importantly, the county, where the Health Director sits, is not doing that. And I keep hearing, yes, but the county recommends this and the county's saying that, but the county, either, either, somebody's reading and interpreting, misinterpreting what the county is saying, or the county is obviously not practicing what they preach. So I'm having a very difficult time with this and I really, really, and I'm hearing this from residents and I'm hearing it from staff members that are manning these doors, that they don't like turning people away that come here to do business. And our residents are getting upset because they can't come in here as customers of the city to do the business that the city is here to do. So again, to me, this is counterproductive. I'm not understanding this conversation, I'm really not. And, but that's my two cents worth. I don't think I'm gonna turn anybody's opinion on this, but, but I just, I have, I've told people that have talked to me that I would express their opinions when we had this come up today, so. Anybody else?
So can I provide staff comment on how it's been going for the first couple weeks?
Who's this?
This is Aaron, sorry.
I'm kidding, Aaron, I know that. Yes.
I can't tell if you can hear us.
Obviously, obviously you can.
Okay. So, you know, when it first got approved, we obviously had meetings already scheduled, for in-person meetings. And we actually very much struggled to be able to get police officer to man the doors for the meetings. You know, between just the number of officers that we have right now that are out for various reasons, things like that, it was definitely an issue for us. And so we have basically tried to move pretty much every committee and commission meeting we have to Zoom, so we can avoid this issue of trying to have a police officer there at the doors for the meetings. We did have to that first week and it was an issue of getting someone there. We had, you know, to pull people from different locations, things like that. You know, at the most, we have three officers on duty at once. Into station one for 20 minutes, whatever it may be, at the front door until a meeting starts, can be difficult for us. And we don't always have three on at the same time, just because of our staffing situation. So we did run into that. So because of that issue, we have tried to encourage all of our committee commissions to move to Zoom. As far as people coming to City Hall, yes, that has been a concern. You know, we have a camera outside and, you know, some of our people that, you know, work the front desk in that area, they see elderly people coming and the elderly people are confused and they're not sure who to call. And they see the thing on the, they see the sign on the door, but they just kind of start knocking. And then we have had staff go out sometimes, even though they're not supposed to, have had staff go out to just open the door to help them. But that is against the policy and we are putting a stop to that because that isn't the policy. The policy is very clear that you have to have an appointment. And so if they see someone out there wanting to get in, we've clarified with our staff that they're not to go out there and discuss and talk with them. They need, the people out at the front door, per our policy, need to call or need to send an email or need to do something. Now if they call and say, "I'm outside, I'm willing to wear a mask, I just want to come in and do X, Y, Z," that is fine. But the issue that, you know, our staff have seen and why that they have gone out to help sometimes is because the ones that aren't doing it are elderly people. I don't know how else to say it. And they are looking confused, they're looking angry, they're knocking and then they go away. And we're not getting a phone call and we're not getting a follow-up. Sort of exactly, not, not exactly sure what they wanted sometimes. But again, we have clarified with staff that they're not to go out unless they call and say, "We're here at the front door, we will wear a mask and we'll come forward." So that does cause some concern for staff, that we have some staff members that feel very bad about it. I mean, they were basically violating the policy because they wanted to help people. That's kind of what they like to do, especially our staff that man our front desk, they like to help people. And so I've clarified with them now, unless that policy changes, they are not to do that. So we have seen that concern. And I would have to say that I would guess that that issue's gonna continue moving forward, that's for sure. You know, we're gonna see people continuing to do this and my concern is that we're, we're causing a hardship on those that are least able to utilize technology to contact our staff, if that makes sense. And, you know, it is just a reality. And I want the council to recognize that this is a concern that has been happening. We have had staff that, I hate to say violated the policy, that I've now clarified, I've dealt with that issue internally. But they've done it because they felt so bad about seeing people out there struggling.
Aaron?
But, you know, again, we're not here to make policy, we're just here to implement the policy. So I, that's, that's what we've seen so far with the situation.
Aaron, if I may, this is Sarah. And I just wanted to follow up. The suggestion to lock the door was, I think, something that you had recommended because employees were feeling uncomfortable with asking people to wear masks. I'm, I have, I'm fine with trying to leave the door open and requiring masks so that that's not a barrier. But my understanding was you were concerned about your employee, about the employees dealing with those hard situations potentially. Hopefully there won't be, hopefully folks will respect.
Well, I would assume there probably will be. What I'm saying is, is that the situation we've created, there's really not a win for us. If we just let people come in without masks, we are going to create conflict. If we don't let people come in without masks, we're creating the issues we have right now, where people are outside very confused, not sure how to get into the building and then just leaving. Or we're having staff then violate the policy because they feel so bad about it. So I'm not saying I have the answer, other than I don't want people just coming in and making our staff enforce it, because I think that will create issues. I don't know what, how you fix this issue, other than the issue does exist under this policy. It is there, that we will watch people struggle outside, not knowing how to get in touch with us, even though the sign is there, I fully understand that. And if they don't, they just leave. And I'm not sure what they're here for, what they're looking to get accomplished, but they're not obviously getting accomplished. But I don't have a better answer because I do fully think that if we just allow people in, we will have to either have a police officer in City Hall full-time, or we're gonna create conflicts for our staff that we don't want them to have to deal with. So I'm not saying that there's a better answer under this policy, I'm just saying that this policy has created this issue that we're seeing.
So Aaron, just so you know, the intent of the policy was not to lead to what you're talking about, so that's helpful. What I'm wondering is, when City Hall was closed prior, we had some kind of a doorbell system where people could ring? I guess I'm wondering if we could bring that back?
We can, you know, we're still gonna deal with the direct problem of staff having to talk with somebody, albeit through a door. Will you put a mask on or not? And if they say no, they can at least turn around and walk away. But they will be still, we are still gonna be making our staff confront a person to tell them, "You must put a mask on before you may enter the building." And if they say no, we're then having our staff basically just turn their back on people and walking away. So we can do that, yes, but that will be then the next issue that we have to deal with is our staff will have to walk up to the front and do that. So again, policy discussion, but it is creating another conflict situation with our front desk staff.
So which would you prefer? Because I'm trying to figure out.
Well, I think, I think the answer ultimately is that if you're gonna keep this policy in place, it's probably best that they contact our staff, where our staff doesn't have to interact with people directly. I feel, I know that's a horrible customer service thing to say and I hate to say it as a city, but at the same time, how will our staff know if this person is gonna be agreeable or not, is going to get irate or not? You know, whether a door is between them or not, I still see that as a concern. So if the policy's staying in place, I, I think it's that they have to call or email. As frustrating as that may be for some of our staff and I'm sure for some of our councilmembers, that I still think that's probably the safest way to handle this.
So call or email to what, let the staff know they're coming?
Well, yeah, or if they're outside the front door to say, "We're here." And our staff first can say, "Okay, our policy is you have to wear a mask, will you wear one?"
Okay.
And if they say yes, then our staff will come, come out and, you know, they can let them in and, you know, do their business sort of thing. But I think it's, I think it's hard to have a face-to-face confrontation over some of these things.
Aaron, I'm wondering if we can make our sign upfront so that the phone number is big? There's a lot of words there and a lot that you have to read through to get the directions on how to do it. So I'm just wondering if there would be a way to simplify it so that it might be easier?
We can definitely make the phone number bigger, that's, that's not an issue.
What do you think about having a handout there that basically tells them what they can do? You can call now, you can call later, at least, and it's something they can take home with them.
Yes, we could definitely, we could definitely do that.
Me being no big deal, just take a picture of it, a lot of people are not. That doesn't work for them.
Right, we can, we can definitely do that.
Let me, let me ask if I may, uh, I don't know, Becky, if you can answer this or not, but how many, how many people have called to make an appointment to come in?
Um, it, I don't know, I, most staff members are handling it themselves, they're calling them directly, um, front desk-wise, if they're standing out there, they'll call, or, um, we see them walk away, a lot walk away, what happens with that, I don't know, I haven't heard, I personally haven't heard complaints about it, but I, I guess I don't know on a given day.
Complaints from?
Public coming in, having, not getting in, we see them out there knocking on the door, or trying to get them, walking, and then if they walk away, some have called saying they're just here to pay a utility bill, and then depending on what's going on, we have let them in, a given number on a given day, I, it varies.
You know, to me, again, this, this is not making any sense, the, people can go to conduct business anywhere they want in the city.
Too bad.
But, but they don't have access to government, the one place they should have unlimited access to is government, their own government, they're our customers, they're the people that are keeping, that are paying for this building, and yet we're restricting access to them, it'd be one thing if that access were restricted throughout the city, but it's not, this is the only place in the city where we're restricting access and the doors are locked, I don't, I, I, I'm not getting this, I, I really don't get this.
Well, let me explain the intent behind it, the intent is to protect them, the intent is that we as a city care more about them than most other places, because we're trying to keep them safe, that is the intent, so they have access to government, these, we have employees who can serve them, we are simply putting up procedures to protect them that they have to go through with a call and email, setting something up, it's not, it's not that they don't have access to government, it's just that they have to make known, they have to connect with staff.
And unfortunately, we're in this situation because there is a vocal minority who, um, aren't willing to honor what's being asked of them, so we're having to lock a door to protect the employees, I wish it wasn't that case, I wish we did not have to do that, but we are hearing from our employees that they don't feel safe, so it is what we're doing in an effort to keep them safe, and it was at the recommendation of, um, of Aaron to, to try that.
I'm sorry, can you clarify for me, the, I, I have not stated that our employees are asking for this, and I also have not, I guess I'm not sure what recommendation you're saying as well, I mean, the door lock thing, yeah, that's 100% my recommendation, so I don't want confrontations with our staff, and I also can't justify having a police officer in City Hall eight hours a day, um, but I, I guess I would ask for clarification on our staff asking for this, um, because I have never conveyed that our staff is asking for this.
Well, I, I guess that was what I took away from it, that when we were locking the doors, it was a safety issue and not wanting our employees to have to confront people, so that was what, how I interpreted it.
I see, I thought you were referring to the mask requirement in City Halls as a whole, not just that issue.
No.
Well, I, um, I've talked to a lot of staff members, and, uh, you know, probably maybe people, staff members know, you know, who they can voice their opinion to based upon what they hear as far as the support they might be getting from one side of the issue or the other, I have not talked to a single staff member here, no staff member has talked to me saying that they don't feel safe with the doors open, not one, and most of the staff members, and I mean this, most of the staff members, and not all of them are talking, but they, they would like to see the doors open, and again, we are restricting access to government, Paul, the doors are locked, that's restriction, our doors are locked, nobody else's are, but ours are.
I get that, I would submit that this council has shown almost no leadership in the face of an international pandemic for nineteen months, this is the only, only thing that we have passed in the last two weeks, that we have implemented to show leadership in the city, it is my hope that other people who aren't restricting access would understand that in a pandemic, you have to protect people, and that other places would say, "Yeah, we really need to be wearing masks," because St. Croix County Health is saying the levels are high, we need to show leadership, we need to show resolve, we need to help this community heal, we've lost eighty-four people in St. Croix County now, every time I look at the dashboard, the number goes up, and all we talk about is things that are very minor, like putting on a mask, very simple to do, very easy to do, so I would say, "Yeah, it's complicated," but can we please show some leadership for public health in Hudson? And if we don't do it, I'll, I'll guarantee you nobody else is going to do it, that's our responsibility, that's why we're elected, that's why the people have put us here, let's show some resolve and help lead this community forward.
I would submit, uh, Mr. DeZiel, that showing leadership is also highly recommending, instead of, um, calling out a certain small sect of people that aren't wearing it, let's see how that plays out first.
Then I, I, I don't know, I, I don't think that we haven't, that there's a lack of leadership from this council, I mean, we've talked about it a lot, but what we have done is follow the leadership that has come down from the county, which is what we're supposed to do, we're supposed to follow the leadership coming from the health director.
That's what this-
And from the, and from the county board, so we're doing exactly what the county board is doing, exactly.
I believe I-
Following, we are following CDC guidelines and we're following the county recommendation. Jim?
Could I make some co-, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Could I comment?
Yes, please.
Was that a yes?
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
Okay, uh, relative to the county board, uh, we, I think we need to look at who they are, and the fact that they're a political body, and that they're not acting as a management body, they're, they have a staff that they pay, and a responsibility to make decisions around health, and they choose to not follow those decisions, so, um, for whatever reason, I think it's partly political, it's partly because they represent such a widely disparate, uh, range of population, and while Hudson is much more, uh, much more focused in terms of, of background issues, so I choose not to, uh, view their, their, these county boards' position as appropriate, or even as a direction for us to follow, I see lack of leadership on their part, uh, lack of willingness to follow the advice and the recommendations of their own organization, it would be so easy for them to do that because they already have security at that door, every twenty, when it's open, there's security there, so they would be very, very, very easy for them to force any kind of mask mandate or issue, so it's, it's just, I, I don't understand it, and it's not a good example for, to me, a good example to follow, um, the, uh, I just had a doctor's office today, and they had a, a three-by-six sign, uh, posted just as you came in the door, said abusive behavior will not be tolerated, and it went on to describe what abusive behavior is, starting with physical, uh, and then going down through language and, uh, ending up with not following the staff's direction, and said, "If you are abusive, you will be removed, you know, the police will be called, you will be removed, and you will not be allowed to come back." So, I, you know, that's, it's really sad that our society has degenerated over this issue into that kind of need, necessity, to protect these people who are providing service, it's, I, I think it's just a shame, it's really unfortunate that we cannot, that our own staff has to be afraid of asking people to wear a mask because of the reaction they might get, it's a really, really sad, uh, state of affairs, and I think we need to, uh, I, I like Paul, I like what you say about leadership, and it is time that we did it.
I'd just like to reiterate a, a thing I brought up last, at our last meeting, that no other village or city in the, uh, St. Croix County has passed any kind of mask mandate.
Well, thank God, the Hudson Council is stepping forward. I would move this, Mayor, I would move to call the question.
All right, question's been called, is there a second?
I second that.
Motion to second to call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Huh? Did Jim register a vote?
It doesn't matter, there's, there's nobody that's voting against it, uh, motion's approved, uh, question's been called, all right, everybody understand the motion?
No.
Randy?
Was he voting, or is he asking?
I, I, Randy, I, I'd appreciate if somebody besides Randy said it, because you have the most indistinct voice coming over Zoom.
I think it's the location for Randy, and as I talked about, Jim, we're working on it, we have stuff ordered, okay, um, the motion is basically to amend the policy to make it a recommendation to wear a mask at City Hall.
Everybody good?
Mm-hmm.
All right, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion does not pass, is not approved?
Motion to continue with current policy.
I'll second that.
All right, I would ask that we amend this policy, if possible, Paul?
Give me, what are you looking for?
What I would, what I would suggest is that, I, I, rather than having to go through this every two weeks, I would suggest that we tie this to, um, to the county, uh, level of, of urgency, what is, what do they call it?
Transmission.
The dashboard, yeah, the-
It's on the dashboard, but the level of severity or whatever, so it's at high right now.
Yep.
And I would, I, I would ask that we amend this so that, um, we, our policy would change when that level goes down.
Goes down to the next step, is what you're saying?
Right.
So just to clarify, there are four levels of community transmission, low, moderate, substantial, and high.
Okay.
So, and those tied to the dashboard.
Okay.
And what's the recommendation for substantial?
Uh, substantial, universal indoor masking for healthcare, universal indoor masking for schools, uh, mask in public indoor spaces, weakened immune systems, mask in public indoor spaces for not fully vaccinated, um, and mask in public indoor spaces for fully vaccinated, so the change in masking in public indoor spaces, ba-, in, in this dashboard, doesn't change until the moderate stage, uh, where then it's an optional masking for fully vaccinated.
Thank you. So we would tie it to the moderate stage, is that what you're suggesting?
Something, just so we don't have to have this conversation every two weeks.
Yeah, I'd be good if you, I, I mean, I would accept that amendment, when it gets to moderate, that we don't, that we would lift the policy, that would make sense.
I can second, if you're accepting that, do you need it to be seconded as well then?
I think so.
Yes.
Can second that?
All right, so that, it's just an amendment, okay, so we have, uh, the vote, it will only be on the amendment, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so everybody understand the amendment?
Do you three state?
The amendment, Jim, was that this will not be placed on every council agenda moving forward, that instead, that the policy will go away once the county dashboard shows that we have moved as a county to the moderate level.
Thank you.
All right, everybody understand the motion, is there any discussion on it? Jim?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Motion's approved, I would also ask for another amendment.
Go ahead.
And I would like to, uh, I would like to, uh, allow the, uh, our clerks, the people who are right at the front door, that are the ones that are opening the door, to at their discretion, allow people in.
And would they be asking them to mask as they let them in?
Yes, you can have that as part of the, I can't make the motion, so you're going to have to, if you, if you agree with it.
Well, what I'm wondering is, I, and back to Aaron for a second, I, I don't understand why we just don't have a doorbell, and then the clerk could respond to that.
I couldn't hear that, I'm sorry if that was-
Sorry, Aaron, what I'm wondering is, what I said before, why can't we just bring back the doorbell, and then the clerks could respond to that, and they could just point to like, "Here's a mask" or something behind, before they open the door, the person shakes their head or whatever, they let them in, because I agree that, that would be helpful.
Again, this is a policy decision, I, I explained where I saw the, you know, I guess pros and cons of each of these approaches, how the council wants to, to handle it is, is up to you, we'll, we'll implement.
So, but the, but the answer is it would work, right? Becky?
Oh, yeah, of course, they ring the bell, one of our staff person will walk to the front, we would, like you said, Paul, do the, point to the mask, if they don't do it, we'll have them leave, um, but once again, you know, like I said, there's obviously potential for face-to-face confrontation, although through a glass door, but not the same as, uh, being in the building already, so.
Good, I'm, I'm good.
Is that, well, it's your motion, or somebody's here?
Well, I would move, I would move to, um, add the doorbell, and allow clerks to offer a mask before opening the door, to get a reaction, and then let them in.
Is there a second?
In order to make it more accessible, yeah.
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion to second, Jim, you understand all that, were you able to hear it?
I got it, thank you.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion's approved? Paul?
I think I'm good.
So your original motion then is to extend this again for, for?
Oh, I thought we already did that, oh.
So, we amended, we amended your motion, and you're probably going to have to amend that again, and unless you want to continue this every two weeks, but everything we've done was tried to avoid that.
Right, I'm, I'm confused as to what you're asking me right now, I'm sorry.
I'm asking-
They voted on that already.
I think we voted to-
Yeah.
-extend with the friendly amendments that-
Right, until the transmission-
I don't think we did. I don't think so, I, I think, at least my understanding was that there were two amendments that were voted on, one that passed by a three-two margin, the second that passed by a four-one, which amended the main motion, so your main motion is to extend the current policy with the amendments that the policy goes away when the transmission level decreases to moderate, and with the, um, allowance or the authorization of the clerks to let people in, uh, as they ring the doorbell or, uh, request to be, to be in, so now that main motion needs to be voted on, right?
Okay, so I, do I need to move it again?
No, no, but if you wanted to talk about it, now's the time to talk about the main motion. Nope, everybody good, any, anybody, Jim, any conversation?
And just to clarify, will it continue to come back every two weeks for a report?
No, it, I think we just passed, when it, it waits till it goes to moderate, and then it goes away.
I just want the record and the minutes to be clear, so that we don't miss it in subsequent meetings, if your intention was that it'd come back to the table.
No, I think that's good.
Okay, everybody good, everybody understand that? Jim, were you able to hear that discussion?
I heard the discussion on the amendments, and that's clear.
Okay.
Yeah, so basically-
Body, the body of the motion.
Yep, so basically, Jim, all you're voting on now is to formally approve those two amendments as part of the policy.
Okay, got it.
Everybody good?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion's approved?
I, I apologize, can I interrupt before we move on to the next agenda item?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so, this one's a little more difficult, um, but it, it does need to be brought up with the council as a whole, um, I would, I know that this is a very political issue, um, all the way down to the council level, um, and I recognize that, um, you know, as council members, you have various opinions on, on what we've done here, you know, as a council with the masks and things, but I have to make a request that council members do not contact our staff to discuss this issue with them anymore, um, we unfortunately had a very, um, a, a very poor encounter with a council member and a staff this morning, um, that caused a council member, or caused a staff member to leave City Hall in tears, unsure if she would be returning to work again, um, she felt that she was placed in a very political situation, answering questions that she felt, did not feel comfortable at all answering, um, felt very pressured, um, by the, the tone of the conversation, and felt very uncomfortable, and I, I guess I would request, and, and I, I know this as I'm making this request because it was tied to this situation, but I've always asked, I've always had this, been very open with council before, that- before, that, you know, if you have issues and things that, you know, are kind of fairly specific in nature, go to a department head, talk to him about it, things like that. I get that. Um, I would ask that you fill me in on it later. Um, if, if nothing else, the department head's going to fill me in on it. Um, but in, in this situation, this was nowhere near a department head. Um, the conversation, I think, was honestly highly inappropriate to be having with a, a frontline staff person. And, um, I think it undermines my authority and my ability to serve as your city administrator, if I have council members going directly to frontline staff, asking very specific questions on a very political topic, and putting those staff in a situation where, you know, I don't know how they could really feel comfortable giving any sort of answer other than one that agrees with someone they see as their boss. Um, you know, my role is to be that go-between, between our council members and our staff. And, you know, I, I, you know, it, it was a, it's an unfortunate situation that occurred, but it did, and I really want to make sure that, as a council, you, you recognize that, you know, I don't have problems with you going to, you know, Mike Maraz with, you know, a street question directly, or, you know, things like that. But when it comes down to something of a policy or a political nature, I would ask that you go right to me with it, and not go to department heads, or definitely not to frontline staff. And to be honest, I would ask that you never go to frontline staff with anything. Um, I just don't think that they're in the position to be answering questions, you know, from council members. Um, you know, I, I, like I said, I was hesitant to bring it up. Uh, I, I, but at the same time, there really isn't an appropriate way to bring this up, other than with the full council. Um, and so I, I wanted to make sure I did that. Um, I, you know, I don't, I don't know if the council has any questions or concerns about it or anything like that, but it, you know, it's definitely something that just needed to be addressed.
Okay. Thanks, Aaron. Anybody got any comments on that? All right. Discussion, possible action on ordinance 20-21, amending chapter 99-4 of the municipal code of the city, of City Hudson regarding animal licenses. Anybody want to talk about that?
Um, I brought that up. I put that on there. Uh, the state statute, it only talks about licensing dogs. We, I don't know how long it's been in the code here at the city of Hudson for licensing cats. Um, Aaron and I have talked about this, and we issue very few cat tags. We, last year, we issued 56 tags and got a revenue of $560. So between staff time and the licensing and everything, we just wanted to get it to code with the state statute and remove licensing of cats.
You have a motion?
Vote to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. Motion second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZiel?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Brock?
Yes.
Motion is approved, rules are suspended.
Move to adopt ordinance number 20-21.
There a second?
Ordinance 99-4? I'm sorry.
It says ordinance 2021 to top. It's on chapter 99-4.
Oh, yep. I'll second.
Motion second to a top. Any discussion?
I think it makes sense. I think that very few cat owners are going to even approach the city. It just doesn't make a lot of sense, and I feel like most cats are indoors as well, so, um, the dogs is the bigger issue, I think, so, for public safety. So I think, I, thank you for catching this and putting this together.
Yep. Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Jim? Those opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion, possible action on ordinance 21-21, amending section 240 2.1 of the City of Hudson Municipal Code Regarding the Village of North Hudson's Representative on the Utility Commission.
Move to suspend the rules. Second.
Got a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms?
Yes.
DeZiel?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Brock?
Yes.
Motion's approved, rules are suspended.
Move to approve ordinance 40, 242, sorry, dash 1B.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion?
Actually, clar, point of clarification, I think it's 242.1. You want the whole thing, not just B, right? Or is that it?
What says, that's what it says on, oh, I see, at the beginning of it. Sorry, Randy, yeah.
242.1B is being amended. I don't know that this has an ordinance number-
It's 2121.
Wasn't the last one 2121?
No, it was 2021.
Oh, okay.
Everybody got it?
I, I have comment.
Okay.
I, I have a concern about, uh, this one person perhaps should not be allowed, the person from North Hudson should not be allowed to be the chair. The chair tends to have a certain amount of power based on setting of the agenda. I don't know how, exactly how this board operates, but that would be a concern I would have.
Yeah, they can't. So the wording, uh, let me find it right. Um, the wording in the agreement does discuss that they cannot hold officer position.
Okay, then our amendment should, how, how is that amendment?
Oh, you're right. The amendment's not right. It says shall be eligible to become an officer.
Right.
And I think it's supposed to say shall not, if I'm not mistaken. Please, I'm trying to remember now, but I didn't think they were eligible to become, uh, an officer of the commission.
That was what I was thinking, too.
I, that's how I remembered it, to be honest. Uh, maybe I'm wrong, but that is definitely how I remembered it.
Hmm.
Um, well, give me two seconds. Let me try to pull this up. Maybe I'm wrong, although it would take the majority to make them-
Yeah.
-an officer, which I don't see happening, but again, I, I, you know, I don't, I couldn't say for sure. Uh, that's, yeah. All right, one second, I got it open here. Hold on, I'm looking. Oh, there we go. No, that, okay, I'm looking at my notes. I do have my notes in there. Okay, so the conversation was, is yes, technically, they can be an officer of the commission, and that's, that's okay if they are. The biggest issue that we had on it was that they are not allowed to participate in any sort of closed sessions that deal with-
Right.
-um, that deal with, uh, anything going on, uh, with this agreement with them. Um, so that was, I think that was our kind of trade-off with that. And I believe honestly, that, you know, the thinking was that, while the chair may have some control over an agenda, they can't keep items officially off an agenda forever, sort of thing, so.
I think the, the other part-
The conversation was had as part of it, Jim, but I think it was determined that even if somehow they were the chair, the chair can't just, you know, completely control an agenda and everything else. So they, they won't have that, they wouldn't have that ability. So I think the trade-off was, is we were okay with that if it did occur, because that, we don't, we didn't necessarily see where it could have a negative impact. But the biggest thing was, is they can't be involved in any sort of closed sessions related to the agreement.
I would ask the question, who manages, who controls the agenda? I think we, we have to protect against that, because I, well, I sort of agree with you. I think they're in a position to manage that agenda, and I don't think that's appropriate.
You know, I, I-
We all-
I think my, my opinion on this is relatively moot point. We've got, how many total members on the, on the commission? Seven? Six? Seven? Anybody? Aaron?
Yep, seven, sorry.
Seven, okay. Six of them are from the city of Hudson. If you do this, Jim, and council members, if you do this, you're restricting the ability of our six members to vote for somebody that they may want as a chairman. And why would we want to do that? Why would we want to restrict our members? And even, even if they decide, I mean, it, it's highly unlikely that our six members are going to vote for somebody coming out of North Hudson to be one of the officers. And, and if it is, in fact, somebody that they would like, you're not going to let them have them. I don't, I, that doesn't make sense to me. So we had this discussion before, and, uh, part of it had to do with, uh, with what Aaron was talking about, but the other part of the discussion had to do, it is just highly unlikely that the six members from the city of Hudson are going to vote for, for the member from North Hudson to be, uh, the chair of this organization.
Well, council, believe, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Nick, that we all agreed on what was in front of us.
Right.
And that was part of the gentleman's agreement we had with them.
It was part of the agreement. That's in front of us, that's right.
For us to do this now-
Good point, Randy.
Very terrible to our neighbors.
Yeah, and I agree with that. Um, you've already approved the agreement. So essentially, the, the task that we were asked to complete was to update the ordinance based on the terms of the agreement that the council's already adopted.
That's a good point. Thanks for bringing that up, Randy.
And I, I see this as a spirit of cooperation with North Hudson. We want to work together. We don't want to, we want to go in with our best intention, and I think that's what this ordinance does, and it allows for more freedom for that committee to, to do that, so.
Hey, Paul, I agree with you.
It's our night, Randy.
What a great way to end a meeting. All right, everybody, we, there was a motion and a second, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody, uh, everybody good? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's appro-
Aye.
Okay, we got it, Jim. Uh, motion's approved. I don't have anything. Anybody?
I would just like to reiterate what I said in Finance Committee, uh, we have an oversight of the 35 north projects, so we can address what went wrong with so many issues on that, uh, on this whole build, between everything that's happened from now and why it's still not done.
Yep.
Okay.
Anybody else? Jim, anything?
Nothing, thank you.
All right.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion, second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. We stand adjourned. Thanks, everybody.